Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. This is the September 8th meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Remote meeting via Google Meet technology. Could I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor?
Abstain.
Four oh, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting from August 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the minutes from the 24th of August? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Do we have any comments, questions, or requests? There being none. Dr. Meyer?
Okay, thank you. So we'll start, we just had a couple resignations. We did have Sarah Blodgett, 7th, 8th grade special education teacher at Clinton Middle School. Gave her resignation. She'd been here since 2013 and worked in a variety of roles for us, so we wish her well in her future endeavors. And Libia Perez Moore, ESL teacher at Clinton Elementary School. Also gave her resignation right before, so we wish her well in her future endeavors as well. Oh, wait, I got another one. Polly Barudy, IA at Clinton Middle School, gave her resignation letter as well on Tuesday, September 1st. So we wish her well too. She's going to pursue employment in a different industry. All right. So most of the next things in there, in terms of the school reopening updates, there's a lot of information in your packet, but I also have a PowerPoint, so what I would do is I would invite the committee to sit down front. I'll share my screen. We can turn the projector on and then we will go from there. Hopefully it's not too, too long. Okay, so here's our reopening presentation from September 8th. Some of this stuff will be similar to other presentations. We'll show a couple new things in here as well as we get closer to the first day of school. So quickly just remind us about the reopening plan, some of the phases in it, and then review our Clinton data, talk about some of the steps we've completed so far. Talk about sending your student to school, what that looks like and what steps and things you might need to be aware of. We'll touch quickly on athletics, though there's a lot more in the packet on athletics. Not going to play that video, I've included it again. That is the same video, so when we shared, if you see it, it's the same video from DESE. Mr. Sarmak, are we okay with sound?
No, there's something, I think you're hearing something from something, I don't know where it's coming from.
It's the projector. How about? All right, if I unmute my mic, it should pick up from right here. You want to see if that works? Testing, is that okay? Any better? So go review what we've, our reopening plan so far, some of the Clinton data, some of the steps that we've presented so far, some tips about sending your students to school this year, and a quick overview of athletics. So just a reminder that we had to come up with, you know, there was basically this continuum of reopening plans with remote learning being all the way at one end, returning without restrictions at the other, and kind of two steps in the middle. One would be everyone returning in person with new safety requirements, and the second, a hybrid learning somewhere in between everyone and remote learning. All the reopening plans are based on the basic safety principles here of wearing masks and face coverings, physical distancing or social distancing, aiming for six feet between individuals when possible, hand washing and hand sanitizing, and staying home when sick. So it was that video we showed a couple of weeks ago. Those are kind of the four main strategies that they're saying, you know, any one of those isn't necessarily perfect, but the combination of the four of them should help to keep everyone safe. So for the full in-person, we, you know, we tried to develop our plan so that it can go to full in-person. We tried to keep our class sizes small, but we really haven't talked about the full in-person much because right now with some of the restrictions, particularly around things like transportation and some of the class sizes, as far as the rooms, trying to be able to keep six feet space. While we might meet the three feet requirement, we don't meet the six foot requirement. So we focused really on the hybrid for right now to get things going, to give us a space to figure out how everything works. Our hybrid model is one week in-person and one week remote. Basically a green cohort or a gold cohort. Our, the plan that was approved by the school committee was to try this through October 22nd with a plan to review it no later than the October 5th school committee meeting. That should give us a couple of weeks of data, and then we can decide from there if we're going forward or if we're, you know, continuing in that model, or we need to switch to anything different. We still having trouble, Scott? Okay. Yeah. So, and then we have a remote, within remote, there are three options. So basically we said the first one is the remote option, which approximately 20% of our students elected, and that's basically the electing to learn remotely even though we're opening in a hybrid model. One we didn't really talk a whole lot about in our original plan, but we're just trying to kind of build this one in a little more as we go forward, is remote plus, which is this idea of if we get potentially to a situation where we can't bring as many students as we're bringing back right now, but we would still maybe bring our high-need students in, at least for a partial part of the day, if the data were to make us go that route. And then the last one would be a full remote. That's similar to kind of what happened in the spring in terms of when the buildings are completely closed or the data says that we can't have anyone in the building. In our plan, we talked about three reopening phases. The first one was staff professional development, which began on, not 10:31, that should be 8:31, excuse me. Student reconnection, so right as of now, all parents should have been contacted by their teacher, and individual meetings starting tomorrow on September 9th. And reopening our first day will be September 16th, which is a green week. So it's kind of the three phases we talked about in our reopening plan. Looking at our data, this chart just kind of summarizes our total cases by week, and the state, starting on the 19th of August, came out with an indicator for average daily incidences per 100,000. So initially on the 12th, sorry, on the 12th they came out with that. On the 12th, we were, what's now gray at the time, it was white, which was less than five. On the 19th, we went to three, which was green. On the 26th and 29th, we had the same, 6.6. What I have there in that column, I say 9.8. The official data comes out tomorrow on the 9th. That data of total cases, I took off of the Clinton, Town of Clinton website today, right? So according to Town of Clinton website, as of right now, there's 289 total cases, which would put us at a case count in the last 14 days of 10, which would keep us lower than the 13 it's been for the last couple of weeks. So hopefully we would see that 6.6 drop and see some improvement. But we'll have to wait till tomorrow to get the final, the final results. So just, this is what the color coding meant, that basically they're saying that if you're in the unshaded, which is now shaded gray, I think usually on most maps, this is an older slide I stole, or green, that they're recommending a school go back full-time in-person or hybrid if they're extenuating circumstances. If you're in yellow, basically between four or eight cases, they're recommending that you start hybrid or go remote if extenuating circumstances. And if you are in the red, greater than eight, they're asking you to, they're recommending that you should be remote. So they said other metrics you could review, you know, this is one that they're trying to give as more of a clear indicator. That was something that schools and unions and everyone across the state had been asking for, more of a clear metric. They've also said you could look at your positive testing rate to see what that, how that trend is going. They're also saying to look at multiple weeks of data, right? So you should look at multiple reports to inform any changes. So that was really important, though, some clarification I think they gave us in our last meeting, as they were basically saying, just because your data changes from one color to the other for like one week doesn't necessarily mean you have to change your entire model. You want to look at the picture kind of in totality. And if you know, like, for example, if you know that from your board of, working with your Board of Health, that the reason your cases spiked was because of like one isolated incident and not like community spread or something like that, we can take that into consideration and say, well, we're going to look at the trend of multiple weeks of data. And where can you find that data? You know, the Town of Clinton website, you can find where they show the, you know, if you go to ClintonMA.gov, right on the top, there's a giant COVID link. You click on that, it'll just show you, it'll show you the cases. It's usually updated every weekday. And then Massachusetts on Mass.gov, they'll give you the COVID-19 response reporting, and they come out, their main, they give a daily report. I'm sure everyone hears them on the news every day. I get the text alerts every day. But on Wednesdays, they do their major report with the updated map and everything. So, some of the steps we've taken so far, where have we, where we come? On August 31st, everyone came back, our staff came back. We had a welcome back presentation here, kind of somewhat typical. I guess not really typical at all, though, because normally we would all be in the auditorium. We had about 50 faculty members that chose to join us in the auditorium. Everyone else was able to participate remotely. We tried to offer different situations for people, whatever they felt comfortable with on that day, as far as you could do it individually in your room, you might do it as a grade level team in a larger setting, or you could come, you know, in the auditorium in person. Then we had a keynote speaker, Katie Novak. She talked to us about UDL, Universal Design for Learning, and how that plays a role in removing barriers for students, whether it's in remote, hybrid, in-person learning. September 1st, we had a safety training in the morning, district-wide safety training, where we went over PPE expectations, some protocols of how we respond if there's a positive test, those types of things. And then in the afternoon, there was a session led by Jess Minahan, Jessica Minahan, on strategies to support students with trauma. So basically understanding, you know, we had to be cognizant of what students may or may not have experienced over the last six months since we've last seen them, and what are some steps we can take to help support them. September 2nd, we had district-wide training on expectations and protocols for hybrid and remote learning. On the 3rd, 4th, 8th, and 9th, we had some Universal Design for Learning technical assistance and planning. So each day, each building had a day where they kind of met and talked about a little more of in-depth session on Universal Design for Learning and how that could impact their planning for, you know, hybrid and remote learning. And some other individual sessions on September 3rd. I know Alyssa led a session on Great Minds in Sync for the elementary in the 5th and 6th grade. September 4th, the afternoon, we had our first iReady training from that, from the company. And tomorrow, we're scheduled for, there's been some in-house edgenuity training. Tomorrow is a larger day with edgenuity hosted training. So the next step was student reconnection, right? So that started on September 2nd. In the afternoon, each building held a meeting about the student orientation process, basically professional development about, kind of, starting even with like a script, basically saying, you know, here's sort of, you know, what we'd suggest for calling to make the phone calls to set up appointments with parents. On the 3rd and 4th, a lot of faculty had time to make parent phone calls. And then starting tomorrow through the 14th, there'll be parent meetings. On the 9th tomorrow, there's also an evening session, 6 to 8, and on the 14th, 6 to 8. All those parent meetings, you should have been contacted by your student's teacher. They should have been individually scheduled. We'd ask that you try to bring as few people as possible as you can to those meetings, just to keep the traffic down. On the focus of the meetings, first part will be, it was a district-wide health packet that went out. It's, we created it in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. It has a lot of, has kind of a summary sheet. It also has some CDC handouts. There's a sample of it in the packet. Then there's a technology, we're going to be issuing Chromebooks and have parents sign the acceptable use policy and typical registration information, things that the school might need, whether that's updating your contact information or your transportation information, or those types of things. So that's sort of our goal. The goal is also to get people in the building, right? So that they can come in and let parents can actually see, sort of like, see the signage in the hallway, see those types of things, so that hopefully people feel comfortable and ready to come back. So as you prepare to send your student back to school, what are some things you need to think about? So the first thing I would say is you need to know, is this an in-person week for my student? So if your student is in the green cohort, that means they come to school on the days that are shaded green. If they're in the yellow cohort, they would come to school on days that are shaded yellow. We designated these weeks up through Thanksgiving, just to be prepared through, at least that far, and then we'll kind of see how the model's working and if we need to make any adjustments or anything like that. But that's, so there's color calendars that most people should be getting at the registration meetings. We'll also make sure we have that one up on our website as well. So if you know, if yes, I'm sending my student to school today, he's in the green cohort, it's a green week, then you ought to make sure you know what time does school start? Remember, we shifted the times, so there's different times here. So these are the start and dismissal times, as we're planning on them right now. Pre-K, I just put it varies because it depends on which program you're in. There's morning, afternoon, there's high school, there's elementary. Anyone in pre-K should have received a letter with more specifics about their times. The third thing then you might say is, okay, I know, I know this is a day you're supposed to go to school. My student's supposed to go to school. This is a day that I know what time you're supposed to be there. So before you go, you're going to say, is my student healthy enough to go to school? So first you want to screen for some symptoms. One of the major ones is a fever. If you have a hundred, temperature over 100 degrees Fahrenheit, you know, sore throat, cough, diarrhea, vomiting, severe headache. Now, some of these things, if it's, it's also taken consideration that if you know it's for another reason, like if you know your student has allergies and it's related to allergies or something like that, then, then obviously we need to, you know, tailor our diagnosis of their symptoms around what we might know for pre-existing conditions. However, on the flip side of that, if you don't know and you're concerned and you have a doubt, we'd ask you, please keep your student at home. We'd like to err on the side of caution. And, and please understand that if you send your student to school and in school they exhibit these symptoms, our protocol is now you're going to have to stay out of school for 10 days until we can show that you don't have, you don't have those symptoms. Whereas if it's just something that might be, you know, a stomach bug, if you stay, keep them home for one day and then they're fine the next day, then we can maybe avoid that. The second thing, and this isn't a screener that we send home with students in the health packet, it's just to think about other things. If you know someone has had close contact with a person confirmed with COVID-19, which is within six feet of infected person for 15 minutes. So if your student participates in some other activity and you know someone maybe that they had close contact with was exposed, please don't send them to school until we kind of hand, go through that procedure. If they've traveled or lived in an area where you're not, you know, that's just reporting large numbers, but if you think about it, if you traveled basically somewhere out of the state, where the state has not designated that it's safe to travel, then you would have to participate in the quarantine or you'd have to get, travel quarantine or get a negative test. And then the last one I left us on there, live in areas of high community transmission, because if for some reason, let's say you're a school choice student and you live in a different community, and for some reason that community is in like the red and we're not, it might be wise, if you're concerned about community spread in that area, to just stay home and just do a remote week until we can make sure. So then, all right, so now we've decided, yes, this is the day my kid goes to school, all right? I know what time I'm doing it. He seems healthy. What do they need to bring with them? Okay, so the first thing I'd say is your mask, right? Students tend to bring a mask to school with them. They need, you can bring a water bottle or a snack, depending on like your grade level and what's appropriate for what they would normally bring. Bring your Chromebook, kind of said the school tools or the school supplies, those things you might need, your pencil case, there's those types of things, pencils, notebooks. But no toys or extra stuff. We do want to try to minimize what you're bringing to school, okay? So try not to bring your, you know, there's not going to be the opportunity that maybe there was for, I don't know, I feel like, I feel like if I picked up, a couple years ago, if I picked up my son's backpack, it felt like it weighed 50 pounds, and that's because there was a whole compartment filled of nothing but Pokemon cards that they traded on the bus, right? We want to leave the Pokemon cards at home now. We don't want them trading those things around. So what about lunch? Right now, because we, grab and go breakfast and lunch are free to everyone, okay? So this isn't just a Clinton thing, this is in the state that they've extended, USDA has extended the waiver through December 31st, so that way we can do a grab and go. I think it's a smart decision because we talked about pursuing the community eligibility provision already, just because this limits any type of exchange of money, right? We all know money is not very sanitary. You may pack your own lunch if you wish, okay? So you are still allowed to bring in, bring in food for you to eat, but there is a free grab and go breakfast available every day for everyone. So what about the bus? How are we getting to school? So the bus routes will be posted on our website soon, okay? They're not ready yet. We've just, we've been trying to get all the addresses and bus forms and everything to D, so they can double-check it. Their goal is to start the year to try to make it very similar to the previous stops, okay? But they are reviewing that to see what changes might be necessary. So the goal is to kind of keep the similar routes that we've always had, but we need to just go through those numbers and make sure that we're not going to disproportionately overload one bus. So we might have to modify some things where certain stops might get switched from one bus run to another. So that's the process they're working on right now, just to make sure we don't go over the occupancy constraints on the bus. It's one seat, one student per seat. Students will have assigned seats. When they walk in, they'll go all the way to the back of the bus, and they'll fill from that way forward. We're asking you, please have your student wash their hands or sanitize their hands before going to the bus stop. The preliminary guidance said to have hand sanitizer on the bus. Right now, there seems to be a little bit of a conflict with the registry about having hand sanitizer on school buses. So we're trying to work that out. If they'll let us have the hand sanitizer on the buses, then we'll put it there. Otherwise, we're just asking, please, have your student wash their hands or sanitize before going to the bus stop. They're still going to have to use the hand sanitizer or wash their hands when they enter the building, when they get off the bus. So that's, that's part of the guidance anyway. And all students need a mask on the bus, okay? So even if you're one of the younger grades or maybe masks are suggested, when you're on the bus, you have to be, you have to wear a mask. And though, there's a whole, there's proper ventilation for the buses. They'll have all the windows open as much as feasible, depending on the weather. And they'll have, they will be, they have like a disinfectant spray wipe thing that they're going to do between each run. What if I'm dropping off my student? So the drop-off is behind the school at all three buildings this year, okay? So the parent drop-off will be behind the school in the middle school, behind the school here in the, in the high school, and it'll be a big switch at the elementary school because the parent drop-off is going to be behind the building, which means the buses are actually going to be in front of the building at the, at the elementary school. That's just to kind of help facilitate, facilitate the entry and exit process. So what about the buildings, okay? The buildings themselves. So as your student comes to the building, like I said, the first thing they'll have to do is wash or sanitize their hands. So these are pictures, the one on the left, it's one of the touchless hand sanitizers. There are literally hundreds of these up throughout the district right now. Every classroom has one. This one's in the hallway at the elementary school. If you walk into like the middle school or anywhere, you see, some are on pedestals that you can just kind of get as you walk in. They're by elevators, they're by all those types of places. The picture on the right is a hand washing station. This is actually right outside the auditorium right now. You could have used it on your way in tonight if you wanted. This is, it's portable, portable sinks, so there's two right now in the high school. There are others getting delivered. There's smaller sizes for the elementary school, and I think a couple, I guess I think we got a couple from each sizes for the middle school, but we're waiting on those deliveries, but they are supposed to arrive this week. So we should have them before school starts. What about air quality? So these are two different types of air purifiers. So the, the one on the left is a smaller one. That's one that's used in offices. So our, like, guidance counselors, administration at CES have those kinds. And the one on the right is a larger one for classrooms. These are, right now, every classroom at the middle school has one of those large air purifiers. So the middle school seemed to be the one that was of most concern, so we purchased these air purification units for each, each classroom. And then the offices that need them have the smaller one. We have ordered about 100 more units because we're going to be backfilling some of the rooms at the elementary school that may not have windows. They're mostly being used as offices right now for remote teachers. Kids wouldn't be in them, but since they don't have outdoor ventilation, we would be putting the, the air purifiers in those as well. Some other considerations. So there's just a couple pictures I took, but the one on the left here is the hallway in the elementary school. But it looks similar to a lot of the hallways in the middle school as well. It's got the directional arrows with sort of the tape in the middle, so that you kind of, you keep your side, you walk on the tape, that way you're, you're keeping your distance in hallways. The one on the right, that's the, that's the cafeteria at the middle school. So it's single desks, six feet apart in a big grid, all facing the same way, and that's essentially the guidelines for lunch, okay? You sit, everyone facing the same way because you'll have your mask off, six feet apart from everyone. There's a similar scenario set up at the, in the gymnasium as well, so that they can alternate, so you can clean them in between lunches. What about the remote learning week? Well, so teachers will provide their students with a schedule that'll let them know what they need to do for the remote learning week. It'll be mostly asynchronous learning lessons and assignments with a recommended schedule for completion. Opportunities for synchronous sessions, that'll be morning meetings, specials, extra help, office hours, those types of things. A lot of those are going to be not necessarily required in the beginning. They're going to be optional because we understand families have some different, different limitations in terms of what they, you know, who might be providing childcare, what their ability to assist students is. However, this might end up being required for certain individuals as we go along if we're not engaging in the work that we're supposed to be doing. Attendance will be monitored through the learning platforms and at synchronous sessions. We still have to, we still have to report attendance for students every day. So we need to look at that login information so that we can monitor attendance. And we had a big meeting this morning actually to go over the state guidance for attendance and to work on how we're going to be monitoring that for the hybrid week. And this really hasn't changed. It's the same thing for technology access and platforms. Everyone should get their Chromebook when they have their meeting. We do have hotspots, we'll provide to families who need internet access. We have our learning management. We have our learning management system, which is Google, collaboration tools through Google. Our content platform is Great Minds will be for ELA in math, K to six, although maybe not for ELA in grade six. And then, uh, no, sorry, other way, not for math in grade six, thank you. iReady is K to eight. It's an assessments and learning, uh, learning path software that we'll be using for ELA in math. And Edgenuity will be the primary platform for grade six math and then seven through 12. We do have a single sign-on platform, which is Clever. So basically you can go to clever.com. You can sign in with your Clinton Google account and it should have a dashboard for you where you can just click right on each of these apps without having to log into different things. I think even at the elementary level, we're giving little cards. You can even just kind of like hold the card up to your, uh, screen and it'll log in for you, so. These are the content platforms. This is an older slide and I showed these videos, but I just figured I'd include it again in this presentation. If anyone wanted to check it out, I'm not gonna play the videos because I know that usually doesn't end well. Finally, what about athletics? So communities who are in yellow or better, meaning basically the yellow or green or the gray or the shaded, and returning to school may participate in athletics without a formal school committee vote. We can talk about it tonight, but right now, the only communities that are required to have a vote to participate are those communities that are in yellow or better and not returning to school. Right, so if you're, if, they basically said if, if, you know, if your community says you can't come to school, but they feel it's okay for you to play sports, you can do that, but it requires a school committee vote. If you're in the red, you're not gonna be able to participate in athletics. I don't exactly know when that cutoff is. I mean, those are things that they're still working on with the MIAA. I think, you know, if you flip into red one week, is that gonna cut you off for the whole season? Uh, I think they're still, they're still kind of working on that right now. In terms of sports, it'd be high school only. Var, it should be varsity, sorry about that. Another typo. And JV, uh, no middle school sports. The offerings right now, I believe, for the fall across country, golf, boys and girls soccer and field hockey. And finally, just the parent guardian reminders. Please provide your student with a mask. Encourage your student to maintain social distance. Remind your student to wash their hands frequently and please not send your student to school if they may be sick. And one last thing, I just want to show people. So this is a, I'm wearing right now Clinton Public Schools lanyard. So we got these lanyards for, for all the students. That they, that's a mask lanyard, so you could put your mask on and then whenever you have to take a mask break, it could just hang here so we don't have to worry about masks kind of falling on the floor or getting lost or those types of things so that they're not, you know, we don't have them laying all over the place. They are the, uh, breakaway lanyards so that nothing would, uh, you know, you shouldn't, shouldn't choke on them or anything like that. And we even got them in yellow and in green. So we'll try to give you the right one to go with your week so that you always remember when, what, when you're supposed to come. So that's, that's our plan with those. So what's our next step? So the next set of data is released on September 9th. So that's tomorrow, which is a Wednesday. Normally it comes out about 6 o'clock, I think is what they say their deadline is. And I feel like they keep moving that deadline back and they do that because they typically miss it. So somewhere around 6-ish, 7-ish, they'll probably have that map out. We did post an emergency school committee meeting for September 10th. Okay, um, that meeting is only gonna be held if the data makes it necessary. So particularly like if, if the projections are correct, if we kind of were at 10 cases and we're going, and we improve, we go from 6.6 to 6.4, there's really no need to have a meeting, right? We're still in the, um, you know, we're still in the, in the, in the hybrid area. We would still move forward with our hybrid opening. We just wanted to get that posted. It was just because we had the holiday weekend and we had all these different things. We wanted to get that posted just in case we get surprised with the data, with the open meeting law, we'd have the ability to get the school committee together just to see if we needed to make any alterations to the plan. And then September 6th is the first day. That's, we're, we're looking forward to it. I think, you know, we're getting to that point. I said this to teachers in the beginning, we've never had 11 days of PD and by the end of 11 days of PD, you're gonna be begging for kids to get in here. So I think we're getting ready to, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of work to be done, but I think at some point, we want to, we're also getting to a point where we just need to kind of live through it. You know, and then, and our hope initially in the year is gonna be, you know, get them in, check on their health, see how they are, let them, you know, talk to their friends a little bit from six feet away and, and just get them used to being back and we'll kind of ease our way into, uh, to the school year. So that's pretty much the plan I had for today for the reopening presentation. So I don't know if we can transition back up here. I can turn the projector off and we can see if the guys have any other specific questions or things you'd like me to cover. I guess I have to hit it twice. The, it's on the, yeah. Okay, thank you. It should come in the teacher's meeting, right? What did I do here? I gotta stop sharing my screen somehow.
So we'll, uh, we'll open this up to any questions, if any. First, uh, once again, I, I just want to thank, uh, on behalf of the committee and the community, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Thank you, administrative team. Thank you, everyone.
Hold on one minute. I think we might need to make a, another sound change because I think the only mic on right now is mine. May, could you unmute that one for me and just see if that... Hopefully, sometimes what happens is we get interference from the projector because it's hooked up with an HDMI cable and we have it, so it's technically a speaker there. Okay. I will, I will mute mine. Okay, but it looks, so it looks like it's, it's being picked up through the camera now, so sorry, go ahead. Thank you.
That's okay. I, once again, I just wanted to thank you, thank your administrative team, all of the teachers and, and support staff for all of their hard work to, uh, continue to respond to and, and I think in, in many ways lead the way for a lot of school districts in this area. And, and again, to be ahead of the curve, or we're flattening the curve. And it just, it doesn't go unnoticed and it is deeply appreciated. So, any questions?
Okay, um, I think I hit under most all those topics. I mean, that was our presentation, but in the presentation I included the health updates. We touched on athletics a little. I showed some pictures of the facilities. I know that, I said the CMS report on the building. We have contracted that report. They are, they're going, they're coming back out to do a more detailed report. When we get that, we will, uh, make any adjustments that might be necessary. But I think right now we feel in a good place with the ability to have the windows open, the purifiers in each room. And we have made some modifications to the common areas already in terms of the gym and the cafeteria to increase the fans in those areas. As I mentioned, uh, transportation, the bus routes will be coming out soon. They probably won't, they probably won't make the, the paper before, uh, first day of school. But we will, uh, try to get those on our website and make sure we do a one call so people are available and they, they know how to find them. Yes? So the only problem is, if it's just my sound, can you hear the other school committee members?
It's quiet. Fairly obvious.
If we speak up?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so I'll try turning my, my speaker back on, or my mic on again. Okay. All right, we apologize to that. We had a little bit different setup today with, uh, some of our cameras. We keep trying to perfect this thing, but it's a little tricky doing the hybrid version here, so. So I went through, as I mentioned, I think most of these topics, other topics on the agenda that I pretty much touched on in the reopening plan. And the other one that was a big one was the food services. I know that was, that was featured in the item last week and I think that's, that's great that they were, they were recognized for all their hard work that they did all summer serving meals. So I think those are pretty much my, my updates. Oh, I know there's a lot more information in your packet on athletics. Different things from the, from the, all the mid-watch and the different, uh, the, um, the executive office of energy and environmental affairs guidance and all those, those things. So there's a lot more in the packet. You know, I didn't go through a whole lot of it because I know a lot of it's still being developed and I know the ADs are still talking about things. There is definitely gonna be modifications to some sports in terms of, you know, I know one of them for soccer, I think, is that there's no throw-ins anymore. It's gonna be kicking, uh, kick-ins. There's limits on the number of spectators you can have at the stadium, at the field at one time. I believe it's capped at 50. A lot of schools are looking and trying to do something like giving some sort of lanyard or pass so that students can give that to, like their parents to get them into the events. So I had met with, with, uh, our athletic director, Smith, and, um, and he's still, he's working diligently in all those meetings so we can try to get our, our, our students all the opportunities we can. I'm sure he'll be doing sign-ups as soon as he can to try to make sure we can get the, uh, the, identify our numbers and try to get things rolling for what, what teams we're hopefully able to field.
Steve, with the, um, with the, I know it said just JV and, and varsity. No middle school, would the, would the freshman be able to play JV or is it gonna be like a, uh, a new thing? I mean, I don't, I don't put you on the spot, maybe somebody, you can ask me.
No, so, so the question was basically if there's, um, is if it's focusing just on freshmen and JV, would freshmen be able to play? So yeah, I think freshmen would be able to play. I mean, typically it, for our size of a school, we usually need freshmen to try to make, make sports. I think the, the question right now would be, we're trying not to, sometimes we use eighth grade waivers to actually get eighth graders up to make some teams. Right now, we're, we're not pursuing those waivers right now, trying to keep it as high school only. When we look at the numbers, when we do registration, if there's any special consideration we think we need to make, we'll, we'll bring that back to the committee if we wanna, if we wanna entertain that possibility. But I think going into it right now, um, you know, we've, we've tried to limit the crossing between the buildings. So we figured that to start off, we wanted to try to keep the sports to, you know, all the students in the high school.
So Steve, just if I'm hearing it correctly, if we have a sport where we typically would support varsity, JV and freshman level play, as long as they have participants and opponents, we plan to facilitate freshman level competition as well? Or just that if freshmen make?
Possibly, I think that'd be down the road because I don't think we have freshman level competition for any of the fall sports. You know, I think we'd have to see what the other, what the other schools in our league are doing. And I know they are looking for doing a pod system, just so that everyone knows, to kind of minimize, um, the travel. Uh, I think right now our pod is like, uh, Tohonto, West Boylston, Braunfield. And I think it was proposed to maybe be like SLA and Trivium, but I'm not sure if, if all those schools don't elect to have sports, it could get rearranged a little bit to even them out. All right, so I think that's pretty much my reopening plan updates. The next thing in the, in the packet, we get past all the reopening stuff, is a letter that we received from the, um, the Clinton Home Foundation. And I'll just read the letter. It says, "Dear Dr. Meyer, On behalf of the Clinton Home Foundation Incorporated, I am pleased to inform you that the Clinton Public Schools has been awarded a one-time grant in the amount of $25,000. These funds are to assist with the schools with challenges related to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is our intent that these funds will be used to advance our mission to provide a home or other services for elderly and indigent men and women of Clinton." Then it just kind of goes on to say, "Please let us know who the check should be made out to." And it was signed, "In regards, the Clinton Home Foundation, Joel Frisch, Treasurer." So, um, you know, I think it was, as far as I know, I've been trying to kind of do my homework on this. I reached, tried reaching out. I believe this is a, an unsolicited donation and we're very appreciative for it. I've tried to reach out to just get a little bit of guidance in case they, if there are any specific things they were hoping to accomplish with that money. But, you know, I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention and we will certainly, um, you know, assuming the school committee is okay with us accepting this donation and that we would, uh, grad, you know, recognize them with a, a letter of thank you and, and try to maybe get them some, some, uh, information on our intent for how to use those funds.
So, um, forgive me for not knowing the answer to this, but I think we have to vote to approve a grant that's in excess of, well, in this amount, so. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the, the grant award from the Clinton Home Foundation?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion thereon? There being none, all those in favor?
Great, thank you. And thank you to the Clinton Home Foundation. And like I said, we'll, we'll find, there's, there's plenty to, there's plenty of need right now and we'll be able to, to put that to good use and we'll make sure that we let you know how that was spent.
And Marriott, I'm assuming you'll extend our thanks to, uh, to Dr. Frisch and to the entire, uh, organization.
All right, um, the next agenda item is handbooks. So we have the high school, middle school and elementary school handbook. So, um, all the principals are here tonight in case you have any specific questions on anything in the handbook. But what I would say is, our general strategy to this was, we tried to kind of leave the handbooks kind of unchanged from last year. We just sort of updated some things that maybe like the harassment policy or I know at the high school level, I think they updated the graduation policy. So, and it was to reflect the graduation policy that had been approved last year, right? So it was just updating the policies to reflect current policies. And then what we did is we created basically a COVID addendum. So the point was, we didn't want to rewrite all the handbooks and take out all the normal stuff to then have to put all the normal stuff back in hopefully soon. So we did a COVID addendum that would be in place while these restrictions and guidelines are in place, so. So most of all that stuff should be stuff basically lifted right from the reopening plan, maybe some more detailed for their, for their thing. So I don't know if there's any specific questions on the handbooks, if there are. And so we could have, um, principals kind of respond to them or if there's more, any other questions from the school committee. We'd just like to be able to get these out to the families.
And so typically, we, we, I think we're, we're required to approve the high school's handbook. We are not required to approve the middle school and elementary handbooks, but we usually vote to, as a show of support anyway, so. I'll open it up for questions if there are any. No, okay. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the Clinton High School Student Parent Handbook?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion having been, motion having been made and seconded, any discussion on the Clinton, uh, High School Student Parent Handbook? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, unanimous, thank you. And can we have a motion to, uh, endorse, I guess, the Clinton Middle School and Clinton Elementary School Student and Parent Handbooks?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And, and thank you, principals.
The last thing I had under my report really was an HR update. Mike Ward and I completed our first round of interviews. We definitely, we brought one candidate back for a, a second interview. We're sort of in the process with the second interviews. And, uh, I think it's, it's moving along at a pretty good pace at this point. I'm hoping that we'll be able to fill the position shortly. I don't want to go into too many specific details because we need to make sure we're keeping candidates informed as well. We don't want them hearing about things, uh, first through a public forum. And I think with that, I think I am, it's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Do, I presume we don't have anything new from curriculum, uh, from the curriculum committee? Very excited to hear that you're working with both Katie Novak and Jessica Minahan. I'm a big fan of, of both. The, um, anything from the safety committee?
Not yet, but I, probably definitely, depending on what the data says tomorrow, we might try to get maybe one more meeting in before the start of school. So I'll try to get that on the radar. I just haven't had time to get that together yet.
Anything for marketing?
The only thing is I still, I know I still owe a back-to-school newsletter. That's on my to-do list for basically tomorrow, to try to get some of the stuff from the presentation tonight. Just kind of put like those pictures and things in a newsletter and get that out to people.
Yeah.
Make sure that they know that they should have heard from their teachers and those types of things.
I, I guess I would also say, just in terms of, sometimes the, you know, the best marketing is all of the preparation and planning that goes into, you know, the work. So I'd like to publicly thank the principals for having the teachers have the opportunity for parents to see that the buildings are safe and that precautions have been put into place and that, and to get a chance to, to meet their teachers, particularly for our youngest learners. Again, it does not go unappreciated. So, policy monopolized a little bit of time in our last meetings. We have nothing new. With regard to facilities, we had a team from the school committee and the superintendent of schools and the director of facilities walk through with our building custodians on Saturday. And again, I want to say publicly, thank you to custodians for being here, for Dr. Meyer to set it up for, for the group of us to walk through and, you know, see the schools in terms of both readiness, from a general perspective, both in terms of short and long-term needs for facilities, but also in terms of the readiness with examples of all of the hard work that Dr. Meyer highlighted in the reopening plan. And if, and just for us to be together and see it through our individual lenses, really, I think, was, was, was helpful in the process. So we have, we have a number of points that I guess I'll just share with the minutes rather than going through them, but I think the consensus for all of the members was, while there are, you know, general areas of note and, and some ongoing things that the teams are working on, the, the schools have done a tremendous job in getting, getting them ready. Dr. Meyer's already pointed out a number of the hundreds and hundreds of touchless hand sanitizing stations and mobile handwashing stations and color-coded systems so that you can sit in the lunchroom here at C.H.S. and, and yet still be physically distant. And the, you know, volume of, of HEPA filters, which exceeds these MERV ratings that you hear about, to get to the, the smallest particulates. It's, it's a tremendous investment, and again, you know, greatly appreciated. There's, you know, there's, there's work that needs to be done, ongoing work. Some of it is work that is related to the, you know, for example, at Clinton Middle School, changing the, the office structure around to be physically distant and moving things creates spaces where, oh, that wall needs to get painted. And I know that Director Carlstad has a, has a timeline for that. And the, you know, there are, when, when parents come in, they will see extensive markings, markings for direction and where to stand and how to stand physically distant, and just a number of changes that are the signs of the times that we live in. So, as I said, without reading through this whole report, which we'll include in the minutes, I didn't know if there was anything else that any of the members wanted to add.
Okay.
I just, if I could just add one thing, Chairman Bates, if you're okay with that, I just think, I do think our custodial staff has worked extremely hard, and I know that, you know, they've been able to respond on short notice. The number of classrooms we've had to move in the elementary school to reshuffle for staffing, those hand sanitizer units, I mean, we barely, I barely even knew that they arrived, and next thing I know, there's hundreds of them being up, you know, being installed all over the school. The same thing, the, you know, each one of those, you know, air purifier units needed, not a huge amount of assembly, but some kind of assembly. So I had to unbox them, assemble them, get them all ready, and deploy them in the room. So there's just been a lot of work that's above and beyond. I think there's also, you'll see, if you walk around the building, you'll see the little, kind of those sheets where they have to mark when the last time a room was cleaned. So we have those types of notifications around. And I think our next step is, I think, I think we, we use this time during the shutdown to kind of get caught up on a lot of things. And I think moving forward now, it's just a matter of us making sure we have the processes and the, and the, and the systems in place so that we can try to continue to work on those areas maybe we didn't get to yet, and we can continue to maintain the areas that we have gotten caught up on so that we're not falling behind ever again in the future.
And I presume that, that we'll have ongoing reports from Director Carlstad as to, you know, how, how far along he's moving on, on these projects?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. We have some updates from our negotiations subcommittee?
Yeah, so I'd go, the first document you have in your packet under this, it says memorandum agreement between the school committee and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees. Essentially, it's the instructional assistant. What this is, is this is the MOA for their contract, okay? So this is an MOA that we agree to do a one-year extension of their contract. Essentially, just given the, given the, the nature of, of this year, we had started negotiations both pre-COVID. Once COVID hit, negotiations pretty much were just sort of tabled for just practicality. So what we wanted to do was just kind of do just a memorandum agreement to do a one-year extension. So this basically just buys us another year, and then we'll have to essentially almost go right back into contract negotiations with the instructional assistants. So, so there's two things listed on the agenda. It says IA contract and the COVID MOU. We do not have an IA COVID MOU yet. We put that on there when we posted the agenda, just, just in case. We did meet today, and I think we're, we're moving forward with that. But we, that's, that's still a work in progress. But the IA contract is essentially this I.A. MOU you see here, and that has been, it's been approved and ratified by the, by the, by the union. So if we get a school committee vote to accept it, then we'll be official for, for this year.
Great. Would, I would entertain a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Clinton School Committee and the, and the, and the bargaining unit with whom we're-
Instructional assistance.
The instructional assistance, yeah.
So moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the MOA? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and I have the originals with signatures, so we'll make sure we sign those before we go, okay?
Yep.
Because I have, they, they signed them all, already for us. So then there was the, the next, you'll flip through, there was the evaluation instrument for the IAs that was agreed to in the MOA. And then you get to the next one, which says memorandum of understanding between the Clinton Public Schools and the Clinton Teachers Association. So this is kind of the MOU that we worked out with our staff around the, you know, basically how to return to work safely. Like I said before, during this process, I think that the, the CTA was very solution-focused. I think we worked together to try to make sure that we could do what we thought, what everyone, I think, agreed was in the best interest of students. And I think that that's when you have your most successful negotiations, is when everyone keeps in mind what, what we're really trying to do, and, and I think it went well. So this outlines pretty much everything that, that we talked about. I know I've shared some previous drafts with the committee of this in executive session. So the, if the, this has been approved, sorry, by the CTA, they did a vote and they've approved it. So if we get the formal school committee, if the, if the school committee who just wants to maybe vote to authorize me to sign it, I can sign off on this, on the MOA with, with the union president. MOU, excuse me.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to authorize Dr. Meyer to validate the memorandum of understanding between the CTA and the Clinton Public Schools.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have something real quick, Joe. Robin, I just want to thank you, union. And, you know, we've, I'm sure other members of the board and Steve, you know, when this first happened, you see on TV some of the, the cities and towns where the, and I'm not going to name any, but, you know, where the union, you know, refused to go to work and made it more difficult on the district. So just the, the way this is run from, you know, and I, I know, I know you want to represent the teachers' union, but please, for all the, all three unions. And, you know, I know it's been made easier on, at least on me, I won't speak for everyone else, but it's, it's, it's just, it's nice, you know, in a small town like this to see people just go on a, like, go on that extra step rather than, you know, pushing people out the door. So please, I just want to thank you, you know, your tire union. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. I sat in a lot of meetings and just heard teachers meeting this awesome line. I could have nothing but teachers complaining that negotiations are hard to handle on committees. And I have to say that Dr. Meyer and I have very delicate, legal solution orientation. And if you listen to, you know, maybe why I felt the way, I felt the way I did, and I would listen to this point of view, and we agree on, I'd say 99% of the stuff. So it's, it's been a lot of hard work, but thank you for the recognition. Because I think we are the gold standard for us to stay. I, I felt like, you know, I'm saying everything's going great, and I'm saving committees in town, and people are looking at me like, you're not really saying my life. So I'm really proud to say this summer on all of you that I helped.
Thanks. Thank you. So there's still a motion on the table. Any other questions? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous. And again, thank you.
Okay. Once again, there isn't a secretary's MOU. We put that in there just in case we were able to get to it. We have not gotten to it yet. We have had an initial meeting to talk about, with the secretaries about the MOU, and, you know, I think for the most part, it was fine. We, we listened to some of their safety concerns, but most of it was, you know, they understood that their, their workday doesn't significantly change in a hybrid, you know, situation. As long as there's people coming in and out of the building, they pretty much know what, what they need to do. So, so we have a good starting point there, and I think some of the other general language that we were able to nail down with the teachers' contract, we'll be able to formalize something with them hopefully for like the next meeting, just so we have it all spelled out.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. And the last thing we have is, is your contract, which I, I think we're, oh.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, to move the superintendent's contract to executive session, just for, for clarification. I just have some questions.
Okay. All right.
I know I talked with you, but I'll talk, yeah, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Formally.
So I just don't know procedurally if we're okay to entertain a motion to go into executive session, or do we have to post that?
We, we had scheduled an executive session for the purpose of negotiations, but it weren't, it wasn't this particular negotiation.
Do we, to, if I table it and just put it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine. Listen, I don't want anything to get procedurally out of whack. So if we want to just, and I don't think there's a huge rush right now. So I think if we wanted to just say, let's put it on, we can just put it on the agenda for executive session for the next meeting. I'm comfortable with that, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Okay. Everybody's all right with that?
Sure.
Okay.
See, that's why Mary's here. I don't do anything without checking.
Yeah.
It's taking me a long time to catch on, Jan.
I know, I think we were discussing it too, I think. Personally, I don't really care, but somebody might say something.
Right, I'm fine.
No, and because it's me and I'm here, it would be a little different, but it's, but yeah, we don't want to, I don't want to raise any, I don't want to, I don't want to violate any procedural things.
I think if there's, I think if there's any, you know, further clarification that any of you need, we're far better served by being unanimous than, you know, not hearing if there, if there might be something we're not clear on. So by all means.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Do we have any, we have, we have one thing under old business. We're revisiting the retirement celebration, and I believe we have letters here to that effect.
No, so those letters are from the-
Oh, no, that's for the, that's for the-
That was from the 50-year class, yes. They're postponing their event again till, till graduation.
They just uninvited us.
Yeah. The retirement celebration was, it's just a reminder that we're still scheduled for that for next week. We do have gifts to give them. We have certificates to give them. I think our plan would be probably to present them, you know, have them set up on a table, so that maybe we can call them down, we can announce, you know, read about them, they can pick up their stuff, and then, and then they can either, you know, exit for photos, or if they want to stay, they can stay. So it'll probably be fairly short and sweet, but we'll try to, you know, say a little something about each retiree and have them pick up their, their gifts. They're really, we got them, got them some nice gifts this year, so.
Great.
And then be able to, you know, just at least recognize those retirees before, before it gets too late.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for putting it all together. Anything else under old business? Anything under new business? New, all right. So do we, do we still need the, I don't think we do. I don't think we, do we, we don't need the executives?
No, I don't think we do. I think we just met with the IAs today, so I don't think there's a, there's a big update on that. And then we, the CTA, we don't need to go into. Those were posted just kind of in case we ran into any, any pickups along the way or made further headway. Yes. Oh, just before we adjourn, just to make a point, we do have Courtney Harder's here. This is her first-
We have never actually entertained Ms. Harder in person, have we?
Yes, this is her first real live meeting, so.
We've only had you virtually before. Welcome to the Clinton Public Schools formally and officially. We are thrilled to have you here.
And I, yeah, I just want to say, I think Courtney's done an amazing job. I think, I can't, I, it's all we can do to try to keep everything straight when you kind of know your way around the building and you kind of know the staff, and you know, you know the schedule, and you know, to try to walk in and learn all that on the fly and still try to do all the COVID, you know, everything. It's, it's been, it's been, it's been a lot to ask for, for a new hire, and I think she's, she's responded. And, and even when, when it's not always perfect, she just goes back to the drawing board and we figure it out. So it's been great.
Well, we're, we're very lucky to have you here in Clinton Public Schools, and we're, we're grateful that you chose to be with us, especially now under this very easy situation to open schools. Anything else? All right. Well, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor? Unanimous. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.